Remind him to come up to the.
Okay.
Did you notice that last time on the last meeting?
Yeah.
It makes it hard. Yeah.
Are we ready?
Uh, it's.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah. On camera, but we're good.
All right.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna have a roll call. Obviously, I'm here. Commission member Heinz.
Present.
Commission member Lucas.
Present.
Commission member Whitmore.
Here.
Commission member Alvin.
Here.
Please take notice that the February ninth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting will be held by electronic means pursuant to the continuity of government ordinance effective on October sixth, twenty twenty-one, due to threats posed by COVID nineteen pandemic to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. While some commission members may participate remotely, staff will be present, presenting as normal in the Board of Supervisors meeting room at one fifty South Main Street Lexington, two four four five zero. In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to view or participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We'll do our best to take citizens' comments remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. One, join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar. The link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. Two, you can join by telephone. You may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. Now, before we proceed, Chris Sladen would like to introduce our newest staff member.
Yes, a pleasure to introduce Mr. Zach Sesum, Seesum, excuse me, has joined the Office of Community Development with the role as zoning technician. So with that, I just want to say a few brief words. My name, my name is Zach Seestrom. As Chris said, I'm the newest member here. I'm from Rockingham County, right outside of Harrisonburg, went to JMU, did a geographic science degree. And then, yeah, I'm happy to be here. He has hit the ground running. This is a week in a day.
Thank you. Like drinking from a fire hose, isn't it?
Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you and welcome. So now we are ready for citizen comments. Staff, do we have anyone physically present to speak? Any citizen comments, anything that's not on the agenda? Welcome to speak.
Not hearing any. There are no, let's see if you're, if you're here attendees and you would like to make a, a comment for anything not on the agenda, please raise your hand now. Not seeing any, I'll turn it over.
Okay, great. So now we are at the approval of the minutes from our January twelfth meeting. Everybody had an opportunity to review those. We have a motion.
I like the motion to approve me.
Hey, we have a motion to approve.
A second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are on to board reports, so.
Uh, yes, at the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting, the Board of Supervisors approved the Hamilton Campground, per your recommendations, per the Planning Commission recommendations. In addition, they also approved the Cultural Arts Center, the zoning tax amendment pertaining to cultural arts centers, per your recommendation. Uh, the third item that was, that the Planning Commission had taken action on was the Crown Hardwood application for the Woodyard. Uh, that was postponed due to the request, postponed based on a request of Crown Hardwood, so that will be coming up, I believe it's the twenty-fourth of this month. Uh, the next scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting, the second scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting of this month.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, the TCO did not meet and the BZA also did not meet, so that's all the reports I have.
Thank you. So the fifth item on the agenda is the Thunder Bridge LLC application for a special exception permit for a cultural arts center in the agricultural transition, transitional zoning district. Now, we have a presentation.
Yes, Mr. and Mrs. Pannabaker are here representing the project owners of Thunder Bridge Campground LLC. With that being said, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation before I turn the floor over to the Pannabakers. Again, this is for Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center. Again, just reported, the Board of Supervisors approved the zoning tax amendment to allow for cultural arts centers. Uh, that would have been in the AT zone, A two zone, and the business zone. Uh, in this particular zone, the Thunder Bridge Campground LLC is located in the agricultural transitional zone, the AT zone. Uh, so based on that, uh, action by the Board of Supervisors last month, the Pannabakers have made a application. So general details of the project, of the, of the property, located one twenty-five Arnold Valley Road, Natural Bridge, Virginia, uh, Natural Bridge Station, Virginia, owned by Thunder Bridge Campground LLC. The tax map associated with the subject parcel is one thirteen dash A dash seven, and it consists of ninety-four point six five one acres per tax records, and again, it's located in the agricultural transitional zoning district. Um, as far as the brief details of the special exception process itself or proposal, per section six oh three B, period oh three dash thirteen of the County Land Development Regulations, cultural arts centers are used by special exception. Uh, per the recently defined, uh, three oh two point five six, cultural arts centers are defined as a facility or groups of facilities where leasing fee or admission fee is charged, and groups or individuals gather for the purpose of participating in the creation or enjoying of arts and or crafts, either within a closed structure or the vicinity, and where arts, or excuse me, and where art shows, craft shows, and classes slash demonstrations may be held. So for discussion purposes, uh, we've sort of looked at similar uses and, and developed some, some conditions that could be utilized, uh, associated with it. So one would be substantial compliance with the development plan titled Thunder Bridge Cottages, Barracks, and Classrooms Buildings, dated February ninth, uh, twenty twenty-two, and that was included in your package without a date, and that's the, the last map on your page. It's actually just an aerial photo showing the existing buildings. Uh, number two, cultural art, uh, cultural arts center limited to X number of art and or craft studios. Uh, Mr. Pannabaker will go over the exact numbers, but I believe there's, there's, I think there were seventeen, uh, buildings associated with the, with the former juvenile detention center that they're proposing to be utilized, and if I recall correctly, there were two in each one, so that, that number, uh, is potentially thirty-four, and I may be off, uh, on a few on that one. Number three, cultural arts center is limited to X number of art shows and or craft shows per calendar year. If the board wishes to, to set a number on the maximum number, uh, on the number of art and craft shows, that would be appropriate this, this setting. Number four, adequate all-street parking facilities and traffic controls will be provided. No parking along Arnold Valley Road, further considered seven, Route seven fifty-nine. Number five, all trash will be taken directly to the landfill and not county collection centers or county green boxes. Number six, lighting will be in compliance with section thirteen oh three of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. And number seven, approval of contingent on B dot Health Department and Building Department approvals. With that, I'd like to turn over the floor to Mr. and Mrs. Pannabaker, uh, to review the details of the proposed special exception application.
I'm James Pannabaker, glad to be back here again for the sixth time in the last nine months. Of course, I'm here to urge you to approve our application for a cultural arts center special exception. I know you've received a bunch of emails in support of the application. This resulted in part from my reaching out to discover what reason someone might have not to, not to favor it. I, I didn't find any. I did find a lot of people who supported it. Neighbors are in favor, and some of them have commented. Other people throughout the county want it too. I like the term Mr. Sladen came up with, cultural arts center. It sounds impressive, and someday the Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center could be impressive. The ordinance defines the term as involving a place where individuals gather for the purpose of participating in the creation of or enjoying arts and or crafts. I'd like to mention something, even though maybe it's self-evident. As Mr. Sladen and I have discussed, we aren't talking here only about painting or the visual arts. Over time, our studios may involve various arts and craft activities. The zoning ordinance says we must look to standard dictionary definitions for the meanings of the terms the ordinance does not define. Uh, the ordinance does not define arts and crafts. The standard dictionary definition of art refers to the various branches of creative activities such as painting, sculpture, music, literature, theater, and dance. More generally, art is a diverse range of human activities engaged in creating visual, auditory, or performed works that express the creator's imaginative or technical skills, and are intended to be appreciated for their beauty or emotional power. The definition of craft refers to an activity involving skill in making things by hand. Things like ceramics, glass, fiber, leatherwork, needlework, cabinets, and so forth. I like to imagine someday walking through Thunder Bridge, I pass the performance studio, what used to be a gym, and hear an orchestra warming up, actors rehearsing, or the gentle thumps of a dance troupe practicing. A little farther on, someone has left open a door, and I see a group of children forming pots from clay. I can smell oil paint as I pass another studio. A few teenagers sit under a tree sketching Thunder Ridge. What a picture. In the meantime, Karen paints in her studio or welds sculptures in her welding shop. I play with watercolors and post these stamp collages. Also, a keyboard sits in the middle of my studio. I don't plan to give lessons, although if this project turns into the money pit, some folks predict I may have to. Um, I hadn't realized that I needed to address a couple of points, but yes, the, the two possible, uh, studios in each building of seventeen would be thirty-four studios. You asked me to say something else.
Did I have the numbers correct?
Yes, you had those numbers correct. Well, anyway, please recommend approval of the special exception. Do you have any questions for me?
Don't have any questions.
What are you looking at as far as, uh, a number of events that you would like to, to have during a calendar year?
Yeah, that was something I had, and I hadn't seen the possible exceptions for some reason.
I apologize because we wrapped those about thirty minutes ago, so I usually.
Yeah.
To the applicants, but.
Um, do you want mine for twenty-four year maybe? I mean, I'm trying to anticipate, anticipate for the future.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, i- if you need to put a number in, do you need to put a number in?
I think so. I mean, just, I mean, don't you just, again, for future, because otherwise there may be five a week, you know?
I would say we're, we would be capable of twenty-four, thirty-six.
What do we do follows the property, so?
Pardon?
I said, what do we do here follows the property, so, uh, whether, you know, you're there now, you're here for ten years, and somebody else comes along.
Yeah.
So we got, we got to plan a little bit ahead, and that's not saying that.
Well, maybe once a week for the, so fifty-two, in case folks wanted to have their, I don't anticipate being open in the winter, but I guess eventually it's possible. We don't, right now, we only have heat in some of the buildings, so, but it could be, so maybe fifty-two.
Well, that's not saying that if we put a limit on it, you couldn't come back and.
Yeah.
And, and ask for more, for more, which to me would be a, a better way to go better than, than not.
One a week makes sense. I think one a week makes sense, you know, because you may have somebody in there doing something once a week anyway, you know?
One week, and then the next week they have something art or.
And there's a number, like, when we're talking workshop, it could be like, it could be like five people.
Right.
That whole week.
Right.
It's not like, yeah, a hundred people. This is just, you know, say you have a, an art workshop.
I was gonna say this specifically.
Painting workshop, it's, we're not.
Right, more than this specifically says art shows or craft shows, so then, you know, you're not gonna have one of those every week. So, I mean, then, then we're back to what you're talking about, which is maybe two times a month. Workshops would not be the same as a craft show or an art show.
Craft show or art show would be a couple a year, you know?
Right, right.
A workshop, events could be music, anything, correct? So, you know, they could have an art.
Is there a reason, Chris, that you all specifically said art shows and craft shows per calendar year? Because like we were saying, you know, they can be different.
I think that I was, I was sort of going by, uh, just potential impacts to the community, and I, I think the, you know, the larger, the, the larger venues of art shows, craft shows would be more impactful, uh, potentially more impactful than, let's say, a, a demonstration, or, or, you know, or a workshop, something like that, so that's why.
Yeah, because workshops, you try to keep to a, a minimal number anyways, because you want that interaction.
I suppose we could compare it to the art shows and things that happen in Lexington, which aren't very many.
Right.
So it would be fewer or.
Unless you consider going to having the gallery open each day as a show.
No, I don't think so. I think we're talking about where you've got a lot of cars coming and going and worrying about that. And I guess that's my other question is, do, is, do we have a number on how many people are allowed at a, an event? Did we?
Oh, that was another point. We, we do have a hundred sixty-two parking spaces that are on asphalt. The, uh, the state had that many, because they had, they had a hundred employees roughly or more, and they also had people coming in from the, from the, uh, courts to talk to folks, and they also had deliveries, so they had.
Yeah, plenty of parking then. We don't need to worry about that.
Lots of parking, and they had traffic between.
We're, we're not gonna be parking on Arnold's Valley then. I don't have to really worry about that. But do we have a number, you know, because obviously if you have an art show or a craft show, is there a number that?
I don't, you know, I, I talked about that earlier, and of course, with the, the very sim, one similar conditions that we hound off on or honed in on, excuse me, was special events, and, and, and so special events can be problematic. We, we have not had to count cars there, but with something like a craft show is vastly different, or art show is vastly different than, than a special event, because usually weddings, reception unions, you come, you have the event, and you leave, and so it would, it would almost be like, you know, uh, it would be problematic to count total numbers because you're coming and going, yes.
Right, okay, I got you. Okay, so do we settle on a number?
I just got a question. So, so your workshops, do you ever foresee, or can you just fathom that that could become a daily thing? I mean, I, I don't really want to limit you there if you're, if you, you're, you're having some classes or anything. I just want to.
Art and craft show.
Yeah, not, not craft show, but your workshops themselves. You, you, you ever anticipate that being a daily thing?
I would anticipate that we would have workshops mainly in the summer, and the folks would come and, hopefully, they'll stay in one, either in a campground or in one of our buildings, but they'll be there every day.
But I, I'm not at all concerned about the goings and comings for your workshops. I just don't want to limit you.
Right.
In, in that aspect of.
I think that, that, that condition does not address.
It does not. It just says art shows and craft shows, so I think we're back to what you were saying, what you may do twice a month, you know? So we're talking about maybe to be safely say thirty-six a year, because that would give you three times a month. You guys okay with that? Thirty-six to give them some latitude. You guys okay?
Six or fifty-two.
I don't think they're gonna have a craft show every single week. That would be a lot.
I know, I'm not saying craft show, but it was, it's art, arts and crafts, I mean, yeah.
It specifically says art show or craft show, so that's not the same as just having a workshop, so. We have to be specific, because fifty years from now, whoever owns it, whether it's you or somebody else, we have to have been very clear.
Yeah, but music or any.
Oh, that's what I was gonna get coming back to, because, because what if they have a, a music venue, like you've seen, you're walking by the gymnasium, there's an orchestra warming up to perform a show, would not, not, that need to fall underneath here too, and if we limit them to arts and crafts, that's, that's probably even the, the art.
I would assume that would be one of the shows.
Shows, okay, right.
Starting in the music venue, we've, we've seen this with the, with the wedding venues as far as live music outside, and then what it does as far as disrupting neighbors or, or having an effect on their way of life that they've been used to, and it's a change, so that's something we would definitely want to. I think we had to factor in this, because.
So, so we made a definition for a cultural arts center, and we made a definition of cultural music center. We actually separated on purpose, we separated those two out. So, so I, and I had not, this is the first time I heard the music aspect associated with the cultural arts center. So I was not anticipating music associated with the cultural arts center. And, and just to piggyback off that, you know, I, I was obviously cognitive of the definition of art as well, and I think the only one that, that we have, we would potentially have a conflict is Mr. Pannabaker stated cabinets. Uh, I would not consider a cabinet-making facility as an art or craft shop, you know, and, and we could talk about that. My definitions, uh, when I came up with it, is the art would be, uh, works created by artists, uh, and this is out of Webster's, uh, works created by artists, paintings, sculptures, such as paintings, sculptures, et cetera, to be created, uh, to be beautiful or express important ideas or feelings. And then crafts is an occupation trade or, or, uh, occupation or trade requiring manual dexterity or artistic skill. And so it might be, we, we might want to get on the same page of exactly the, the confines of what we're approving here, because again, I think, I think like a, a machine shop, you know, I would not consider a machine shop as far as a, you know, a mass production of cabinets, uh, the, the chairs, picnic tables, you know, those things I would not consider, in my interpretation, as a zoning administrator, to fall under arts and crafts using the definitions that, that I found in, in the Webster's dictionary.
Right.
Somebody making chairs or something like that could be a craft.
I, I think it depends on the scale of the operation.
It couldn't be mass produced, but if you're doing one chair at a time or one cabinet at a time, I mean, there are people that do custom cabinets to go in and play, you know, to me, that's pretty artistic.
But I mean, there's people out there that make.
I agree, and, and I think there is, there's obviously a high-level interpretation of what is art.
Yeah.
What is a craft? Uh, but with that being said, I would agree with you as far as limited production is certainly different. If you take a piece of wood and you, and you make a, a chair, that's one thing. If you're making Adirondack chairs that you're selling to the general public and selling at Lowe's and selling it elsewhere, I don't think that's something considered. Uh, I think you also have to take, take into the scale of production and amount of production in that as well. I think.
There should be some verbiage maybe to say that as far as mass production or.
Forsake.
But I think, I think I'm like Robert, it's like, if there's, if someone has a craft of, of weaving chairs, and, and something that could be taught or, or.
Building Adirondack chairs and painting them with the scenes on and stuff like that, I mean, those are.
Limit, limit them from that scope as far as.
Because that is craft.
But that is a craft, that is a, is something I think should be committed, but mass production is a different thing.
Right.
And then I guess we have to define mass production.
Or, or leave that to the dictionary.
Well, I, I'm perfectly fine with that, but.
Yeah, well, I know, but it's, there's a, there's a cutoff point someplace.
And, and I, I don't think we have any cultural art police, I mean, real close by, so. There's probably a little bit of leeway for, for most of this stuff, as long as it's just not.
I, I would just encourage, you know, I would encourage the, the landowners, some of this stuff, most of this, most of these, uh, uh, trades will, will require bill, uh, business license. I verify that. If you're selling products, uh, you require a business license. And so we have the, we are in the business loop, we, the Office of Community Development, are required to do a zoning verification form for business licenses. So, so I would encourage, and, and it may be something that, that we do need to get on the same page prior to, prior to making a recommendation, but also, I, I certainly think it, it's certainly on a, uh, each, each craft or each artist would have to be, uh, what is created would have to be discussed, that, that not only the, the, the way it's created, but the volume is what, what is also, you know, a concern, the, the production part of it.
Right. We have to think about how we're gonna put that in as a, you know, as a, one of the caveats of approval is no mass production of.
And I don't know if we're, I'm not, I'm not sure I am prepared to do that at this venue. Uh, you know, that may be something, you know, I, I definitely, I definitely was cognitive, again, of the definition of arts and crafts going through the, the definition of a cultural arts center, but as far as the level of detail of, of defining that in, in, you know, in, in this venue, I'm not sure we'll be able to do that or not.
What about, uh, the music? You know, we were talking about the music. Do we need to say it has to be indoors, or, or are we already covered on that?
And we, we mentioned that, we had, we had a, a fair amount of discussion during the whole cultural arts center and cultural music center, and, and one part is, I don't think it can be outside unless they obtain an outdoor, uh, music.
Music.
Permit, and that goes directly, y'all don't see those.
We don't need to worry about that.
Board of Supervisors, and that's sort of a, that, that is a one-time, an annual permit, I should say. Uh, meaning that, for example, it could be one particular show, and they get a permit for an outdoor music festival. We have done that for one show, one time a year, or another one, we've had applicants have a schedule of music events that come in on an annual basis. And that's, that's where it became annual, that's where that.
We don't need to address that, and actually, it doesn't sound like we need to address the mass production, because if they have to go get a business license, if they're gonna sell cabinets or Adirondack chairs or whatever it is they're gonna be producing many of, they're gonna have to come and get a business license, and you can say no.
Well, but the, the, the potential conflict is there, because I was, I was surprised to hear cabinets in there. So, so the potential conflict is certainly there of, of what art is. Uh, and, and again, I will agree, art has a, can have a, uh, multiple meanings.
But is it not addressed if they have to come to you, to whoever to get a business license, and it's gonna come to you and you see that they're.
It could be addressed on an individual basis, certainly.
Right.
You know, because it certainly is, I mean, as far as the business license itself, and finding how they, how that particular business fits into the zoning ordinance or does not fit.
Right.
We do it, we, it's a, it's a, I won't say daily basis, but we certainly do it, you know, weekly, monthly basis like that.
And, and so, go ahead, Ron. So we've said cabinets. Was, was that just something that kind of got threw out of there, associated with woodworking?
It was there because when I went to the definition that I, when I Googled the definition, cabinets was one of the things in the list.
So, so you're just not particularly wanting to get into cabinet-making business?
No.
Yeah, I, I didn't.
And it was an example of.
Yes.
Manufacturing, a manufacturing facility would probably, uh, cover, cover this, because it's, it's a, an art center, not a manu, you're not gonna be manufacturing cabinets or manufacturing items in mass for sale, and maybe that's the definition we need here.
Mass production is probably a good term, and then you can go to the dictionary, well, then, then when they go to get the permit, you can explain to them what mass production means, and if you disagree at that point, there's probably a process for handling that.
I don't know if there's a definition for mass production in, in the Webster dictionary. We, we usually use the Webster dictionary. There, there's obviously mass and.
Sure.
They're, they're individually defined, but not defined together.
Right.
Well, we could.
The key word would be mass there.
What if we added a sentence to the, to our description that said we, we will not engage in mass production? Or none of our, none of our artists or crafts people will engage in mass production.
Or scaled production.
Or, or what scaled?
Large scaled or.
Large scale production.
I like, I like large scale.
Large scale production, that sounds good.
You know, but then they're gonna say, well, how do you define large scale? Is that five or is that twenty-five?
Yes.
Uh, a quantity of matter usually of considerable size, so then that goes back to, so, so.
Considerable size.
Exactly.
But, but that, that leaves you a certain amount of discretion, though, Chris.
I agree.
And, and I really feel like you're capable of handling that.
Can we call it large scale, or do you want to stick with mass? And what did you say? The owners and their clients, customers, participants, artists?
Tenants would be the, I think the correct word. The owners and tenants, I should say.
Shall not engage in large-scale production.
And so funny enough, that number two is a large quality or a quantity, amount or number, so we're full circle.
Did you write that all down, or do you have to read Mr. Handwriting?
I'm gonna read your handwriting, because.
And we do have, we do have a lot of time to go, because I have, I have a slew of emails to read.
I was gonna say, we've got a lot to get through here, so, yeah.
Going to the music issue, the definit- Going to the music issue, the definition of art and craft or art particularly, and, and then do you have the, you have the, um, definition from the.
I do on the computer, yes.
Cause for this, for our special exception, it includes the ability to have something outside contiguous to the particular, um, studio. And I, I believe that music is included. Let's say someone had a cello studio and they wanted to play outside on a Sunday afternoon in the summer. They should be able to do that.
Well, your neighbor, neighbors might not agree, but.
Well, but you could address that by a condition that says like, like you do for, for a.
You know what? That was not applied. It has not been approved and it can't be considered at this time.
Okay.
Which what?
We can come back and apply for it later if that's the simplest.
Right. The outside music venue is not what we advertised. So she said, we can't add it at this time. That's not something we could consider at this time.
And in fact, to piggyback off this.
Would you read, would you read the definition of cultural arts center for us, please?
I could do that because I already have it up. So to piggyback off that conversation, um, it is also, uh, there's, there's code of, there's county code that pertains to outdoor music as well. So, so we certainly can't have a conflict. And that's why the cultural music center precludes outdoor music. It has to be an enclosed structure.
Right.
So did you want to read the cultural arts center?
It says, yeah, it says, "A facility or group of facilities where a leasing fee or an admission fee is charged and groups or individuals gather for the purpose of participating in the creation of or enjoying arts and/or crafts." Now, this is the phrase, "either within an enclosed structure or its vicinity and where art," that, that's the, that's the sentence. That, that's the, the phrase, "either within an enclosed structure or in its vicinity."
Right. I would have a problem with music though outside because that, that's a music venue that, you know, we got to deal with that with the neighbor. So I, I just, I don't know. I don't know. How do you guys see that?
So I guess.
I think that would be a problem.
Outdoor music would need to be.
Needs to be indoor or it needs to be applied for.
Would need to be applied for under the other.
Yes, that would be.
And that, that doesn't need to be a condition. That, that's just.
It's just the way it is. I mean, it's already.
I mean, in my interpretation, that's a, that's a.
Yeah.
Could be a.
Just so that's us letting you know. Yes.
So it goes back to the definition of art, art, because we're not certainly saying craft, music is craft. So, so again, works created by artists, paintings, sculptures, et cetera. And so that, that was my, and we may have.
We actually discussed this, Chris, and you agreed that.
Well, I mean, music is, when they talk about the arts, it's definitely music and painting and yeah, whatever. But we need to, we've got a ton of things here. If you don't have any further and you guys don't have any questions, I think we appreciate you guys coming in and let us move on to all these people that are in support of you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak?
Mr. Panda Baker is the only one signed up for this.
Okay. So we will now take comments by computer phone and written comments at this time. I'll ask staff, are there any citizens that would like to make comments from Zoom?
Uh, with that, I will, uh, open up the attendees. Attendees, if you would like to make any, uh, comments pertaining to the cultural arts center uh, at the Thunder Bridge Campground, please do so. Raise your hand now. Uh, not seeing any, uh, I will, uh, and we'll, we'll check back on this one after we get done reading the comments.
Okay. Um, so there was nobody on the phone and nobody on Zoom?
No one on the phone and no one on Zoom that raised their hands at this time.
So, uh, staff is going to read the written comments that we received and I believe all of us got those in our emails. So we are all aware of them.
Yeah, no, and, and Mr. Panda Baker and I talked about this. We, we are required, uh, to read these as well. So I, I, it, it's going to be a little bit, but I'll go as quick as I can. How about that?
Okay.
Uh, the first one is, uh, from Brenda Schaefer, uh, 108 Davis White Lane, Big Island, Virginia. "Mr. Sladen and members of the County Commission, I'm a neighbor of the former juvenile correction center who supports Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception. Opening their arts and crafts studios to the general public will offer many benefits to the member of our community. It will be nice to be able to participate and see adults and children coming and going to engage in the arts and crafts activities. Thank you again, Brenda Schaefer." Uh, this is from Denise Schaefer, uh, uh, again, addressed to Mr. Sladen, members of the Pining Commission. "I'm a Rockbridge County resident who supports Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Special Exception. Opening their arts and crafts studios to the general public will offer many benefits to the members of our community. It would be nice to be able to see our, our, uh, adults and childrens coming and going to engage in arts and crafts activities." Again, uh, Denise P. Schaefer, 40 Manor View Court. "Hello, Mr. Sladen. Uh, this is the Powell family, Donna, Josh and Cody. We are neighbors of the former Natural Bridge, uh, Correction Centers and we support Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception. Opening their arts center and crafts to the general public will offer many benefits to members of our community. It'll be nice to be able to participate and see adults and, uh, children coming and going to engage in arts and crafts activities." I have not read all these, but they are not all verbatim. I can guarantee you that. Uh, this is from Even Ospey, I believe. "I'm in support of granting the special exception, uh, for cultural arts centers at Natural Bridge. I've been watching the creation of Thunder Bridge with great interest and I am enthusiastic about the potential. As a Rockbridge County resident living near this beautiful space, I'm excited to see the possibilities it presents. I think a cultural arts center is a great fit both for the property and for the county." Again, uh, Even Osprey, uh, 2026 94 Ford Road, Glasgow. Uh, this is from Dan Walts and Amy Richwine as a former resident, now Lexington, excuse me, for, as a former Rockbridge County resident and now Lexington resident who supports Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception. Opening their arts and crafts studios for the general public will offer benefits to the member of our community. It would be nice to be able to participate and see adults, uh, coming and going to engage in arts. We have known the Panda Bakers for a very long time, their contributions to the community over the years and their energy and passions for opening up the old ju, the old juvenile correction center as a community center will be a wonderful addition to the area county. Uh, again, that was from Dan Walts and Amy Richwine of Lexington, Virginia. This one's from Susan Brady of Ford Road, Glasgow. "I'm, I'm in support of the Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception. Having archer, arts and crafts people studio open to the public will benefit everyone. Public engagement in the arts and community is often good for all parties. I'm in, I am a Rockbridge County resident." This is from Roy Powell, excuse me, Roy, Roy and Rebecca Farber, uh, 74, 79 Round Top, Vesuvius, Virginia. Uh, "We are writing a supportive application of special exception permit for Thunder, Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center. This permit will allow the center to open their arts and crafts studios to the general public. We believe that this would be a very positive addition, both culturally and economic to the all-reimportant tourism sector of Rockbridge County. A critical mass, a critical mass of cultural and tourist-related attractions already in place, Lime Hill and Boxer Woods, Halls Drive-In and the Chesley Trail, Natural Bridge State Park and others. All would be complemented by Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center being open to the general public, further solidifying the Rockbridge area as a place to come, visit, shop and enjoy." Again, Roy and Rebecca, Roberta Farber, 79 Round Top Lane. This one's from Bruce and Sonny McDonald. "I am pleased to support the president, uh, presented that the idea presented by James Panda Baker for a cultural arts center with studios and the visual arts, crafts, music and theater, dance and more. The true cultural arts center, I think, would be a valuable addition to our community." Uh, this is from Walter, uh, Boozerd, I believe, 1695 Franksburg Road. "I've recently learned the potential plans for, uh, plans for a cultural arts center down in near Natural Bridge Station. As a resident, as a Rockbridge County resident, I strongly support the Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Special Exception. Exception, opening their crafts and art studios to the general public will offer many benefits to the member of community. It would be nice to be able to participate and see the adults and children coming and going, engage in arts activities." Uh, next one is from, uh, Ramona Boozerd, same address. "As a Rockbridge County resident, supports Rockbridge County, uh, Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center. Uh, opening their arts and crafts studios, general public will offer many, many benefits to the members of our community. I feel firmly that such a cultural arts center would be amazing addition to the county's offerings to residents and visitors. All adults and children alike would benefit from the opportunity to gauge of creative arts and craft activities in such a wonderful setting. Thank you for your work and for the time to attend this, uh, and taking the time to attend this new opportunity for Rockbridge County." Uh, this is from the Powell family. Uh, I don't think I duplicated. I'll just go ahead and read it. The Powell family, Donna, Josh and Cody. Uh, I have, well, we are neighbors of former Natural Bridge Juvenile Correction Center. "We support Thunder Ridge Arts, uh, Center Special Exception, opening their arts and crafts studios to the general public will offer many benefits to the members of our community. It would be nice to be able to participate and see adults coming and going, engaging in arts and crafts activity." Uh, next one is from Mike and Ginger, uh, Mike and Ginger Reynolds. That is 301 Back Draft Road, Back Run Road, excuse me. "I'm a neighbor of the former Natural Bridge Juvenile Center who supports Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception. We feel that opening arts and crafts studios to the general public will offer many benefits to the members of our sm, a small, close-knit community and Rockbridge County in general. It would be nice to be able to participate and see adults coming and going, engage in our arts and crafts activity. We're so happy to see someone, uh, something being done with the old Natural Bridge Juvenile Center. It's been empty for too long and it's wonderful seeing new life being, uh, being breathed into it." Next one is, uh, David Biddle, 1310 Gilmore's Mill Road. "I am a resident for Rockbridge County. I support Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception. Opening their arts and crafts studios to the general public will be enormously beneficial to our community and allowing people of all ages come to participate arts crafts." Uh, next one is from Thomas J. Gill, 100 Great Oak Lane. And it's, uh, I'm a Rockbridge, if these are all the same, Vicky, should I just say it's the same statement as before? Should I read them all? Saying the same, same statement? Okay. Uh, Mr. Thomas Gill is the same statement. Uh, and when I say same statement for the records, I'm a county resident who supports Rockbridge Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception permits, opening their arts and crafts studio, general public will offer many benefits to the members of community. It would be nice to be able to participate and see adults and children coming and going, engaging in arts activities in such a wonderful setting. So if it's, if it's verbatim that, I'll just say same statement. Uh, this is from Kathy Carlock, 80, 87 Falcon Lane, uh, Hunter Hill, Lexington, Virginia. Uh, the very, the very first statement is verbatim, the, the, the statement that we've read before. Uh, she adds, "James and Panda Baker are truly visionary and planning and already have accomplished so much. They're, they are hardworking, uh, industrial and creative. Uh, they, as they continue to diligently work on their amazing transformation of this property that has sat idle for so many years in a part of the country that needs attention. I would encourage you to offer them full support and grant this special exception application." Uh, next one is from Tom Kraft and Wendy Bagger, uh, at Natural Bridge Station. This is 236 Hill Cemetery Road. "My husband and I lived in Rockbridge County for 20 plus years. We're pleased to, uh, we were pleased when the youth correctional facility on Arnold Valley was purchased. We support Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception, opening, it's the same statement. Uh, "We would welcome the public, uh, look forward to participating, county resident, Thunder Bridge engaging, engaging in arts and crafts and art pieces, uh, in the cultural arts center. These activities will benefit residents, children, adults and even older population. Thank you for considering the special exception. That will benefit the valley in positive ways." The next one is from Karen Waller, uh, 712, excuse me, uh, 172 Cold Run Road, Lexington, Virginia. And I'm writing, voice my support in, uh, right, I'm writing to voice my support for Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception Application. Hearing through friends that this spot, uh, and its owners hope to do open arts and crafts studio space for the community and public participation use. I'm pretty excited for what could bring to our area in terms of community arts activities, opportunities, uh, for our different areas to mix and mingle for families and kids to do creative things together. It sounds like an endeavor that would be a plus, plus for our larger community. And this community is such a beautiful, special one. It deserves outlets like this. We're not growing, uh, we're, uh, state, uh, we're not growing. Let's keep, let's keep growing with approval of this project. Uh, the next one is from Roseanne Mackey. "Good afternoon. As a Rockbridge County resident and, uh, as a chairperson of both Horse Mania 2017, 2018 and Cowabunga 2021, 2022. I have seen how important enlightening and bringing alt and culture to the area. It promotes creativity and joy brings, uh, and joy brings positive vibrations. This request would ta, to take a former detention center and, and have it produce opportunities for others to grow in mind, body and spirit as, as the hopes, as the hopes had been for those young men sent to Thunder Bridge. Uh, being that will bring, will be bringing the place full circle. For those who may not have made it there in a while, this will be a chance for those who, uh, who do come, see, participate and move forward. Thank you for considering this request." Again, Roseanne Mackey. Uh, this is from John Mizer, 70 Cabot Spring Lane, Lexington, Virginia. "I hope you grant the Thunder Bridge Cultural Art Special Exception and offer their studios to the general public. I know it would help improve, enhance the use of the property, which would be beneficial to all Rockbridge County." Uh, this one's from Dave Walsh, Turkey Hill Road, 950 Turkey Hill Road. "As a resident of Rockbridge County who supports sculpture, uh, this is verbatim, the same statement, uh, as before." Uh, Mr., this one is from John Bissett, uh, 201 Birdfield Road, Lexington, Virginia. Um, the very first paragraphs of verbatim is what we've read before. Uh, he goes on to say, "As a member of Rockbridge County Symphony, I'm especially supportive of the Panda Baker's offers, uh, efforts. They have more than one engaged and successful talents by support of the symphony by organs, free donation, free will donation events that directly and fully benefit the symphony, sympathy." Uh, this, and his expressed, and his expressed hope to offer performance space to the symphony for full orchestra performances and benefits events of this very strong interest to us. "There's currently no performance space in southern part of the county and provides adequate shelter space for performances. Plan space would increase access to classical orchestras for many citizens." I've known Jan Panda Baker, uh, I have known Jan Panda Baker both as a musician and as a successful legal author for many years. And I am confident that he, that in stating that he is a man who accomplishes what he aims to do is, he is not a dreamer without concrete plans, short of significant outside interference, he will follow through with his creation of new arts center. Thank you for your consideration. Uh, this is from Conrad, uh, Maddick, I believe, 95 Meadow Grove, Lexington. Um, this is, "I'm Rockbridge County resident who supports Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception, opening the arts, uh, the studios to the general public will offer many benefits to the member of community. I am a photography and longtime member of the Rockbridge Art Guild, RGA, and a past member of Univista Arts Council and a member, and a member artist of Nelson Gallery, one of Lexington's longest established art galleries. Prior to COVID-19 pandemic forcing a hiatus, for five years I had organized our, our AGs, art in the garden and art, outdoor art exhibit that has attracted local and regional artists to Lexington, Hopkins, Orleans for over 20 years. I believe in having another venue which local artists would be able to participate and where all adults and children could engage in arts and activities would be a win-win for the local community and artists in the act, uh, and artists and crafts activities would be a win-win for the local committee, uh, community and the artists in the area. Thank you for consideration, respectfully, Conrad." Uh, I am, this is Nancy Johnson, 160 Green Lee Road. "I am writing enthusiastically support the Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception. I am a both former employee of the Natural Bridge Learning Center and a 44-year-old neighbor of that center. I've moved to Rockbridge County in 1977 and work as a psychologist at, at, at the Natural Bridge Learning Center. I worked there for six years and know the land and buildings very well. Uh, what a wonderful idea to use these facilities for a cultural arts center made to the public. Additionally, for the same 44 years in Rockbridge County community, I've been involved in community theater and dance, including Henry Street Playhouse, WNL Theater, the Rockbridge Ballet. I know how difficult it can be to find just the right space for the community, the theater and dance. Neither Lexington nor the county has any dedicated space for these performing arts of local events. Imagine having a loc, location that is designed and encourages community performance. Imagine. I remember when it first came to Rockbridge County, I worked for Leonard's Learning Center. I tried to find a place in the southern Rockbridge to teach dance and children. I wanted, uh, I wanted to offer those opportunities to families here on our end of the county, but never could find a location that would work. Here we are 44 laters and looks like the very place I tried to find is, has now presented itself. Clearly, I'm excited about this possibility, which would enrich the, enrich so many lives here in our community." Further, it, further conversations, uh, with me to help. Uh, if further conversations, excuse me, if further conversations with me would help, uh, would be helpful to your decision. I would gladly to be going behalf of this requested special exception. Again, Nancy Johnson, Green Lee Road. Mr. Mi, uh, this one is addressed, uh, or excuse me, is from Timothy Gaylord, professor of, uh, WNL, uh, music. Uh, "As a former professor, as a former professor of music, Washington Lee, who supports Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center, I believe opening the arts and crafts studios to the general public would offer many benefits. I look forward to the future when I might have an opportunity to participate musically and see adults and children who engage, uh, uh, of the community engage in these activities. Best wishes and thanks." Uh, next one is Christine Chattleburg, Rockbridge, Bass. I'm a Rock, I'm a Rockbridge County resident who supports Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center Special Exception. Panda Baker showed a marvelous job in renovating the property so it could be open to the public, participate in artists and process, uh, as well as attending and participating artists, uh, endeavors. Thank you again, uh, Ms. Christine Chattleburg. Uh, this is from, uh, Will, uh, William Widrow, uh, saying. is from, uh, Will, uh, William Widrow, uh, same address, uh, fourteen seventeen ninety-eight Franksburg Road. I'm writing this to support of Natural Bridge Cultural Arts Center, both James and Kenan Baker are artists who very generally is willing to open their arts and craft studios to the general public. Uh, this abandoned juvenile detention complex from disuse will provide lots of studio room for both arts, crafts, music, theater, dance, and more. It will be, it will, and it will offer many opportunities, member of the community, both from the artist performance who participate and those who, who go to, to see their works. Please approve this endeavor. Again, William Widrow. Uh, getting down to the last two here, uh, this one is from Monty Johnson, one sixty Green Lee Road. I worked at the Natural Bridge Center, uh, Learning Center of the early eighties since, at least since the start of the, in the nineteen thirties as a C C C camp, and then as a learning center, this spot has had clear useful presence in the county, uh, which for more than just historical reasons should continue. I recommend that you approve the Thunder Bridge Cultural Arts Center to the public. I will provide, it will provide an opportunity for all of us. Again, sincerely, Monty Johnson, Green Lee Road. Lastly, uh, from Mr. David Cox, uh, Lexington, uh, in Lexington. Although I write as a city resident, I want to indicate my keen support for cultural arts center being proposed of former Natural Bridge Juvenile, uh, correction center and application, uh, and its application to open to the public. I believe it has potential for enhancing the cultural art and economic environment of our area, particularly to the Natural Bridge neighborhood. After enjoying experience of art, visitors may seek out a place to enjoy a beer, meal, or a meal nearby. Uh, this is precisely what I've seen happen in the city. For example, First Friday's opening of galleries along Washington Street. Having known James and Karen Pan Baker for most, for most of their quarter century here, I have come to respect their commitment to the community and especially their excellence at, they seek for anything that they set their minds to doing. I have no doubt that under their guidance, this will be a remarkable historical simulating simmer, a center that will promote the arts and, uh, while providing employment for, in itself, while indirectly, indirectly supporting businesses in the area. It's, it's the kind of project in which everyone wins. David Cox, Lexington, Virginia. That's all I have.
Great. So do you want to double check that there's nobody, were you gonna go back and look at Zoom and the phone?
If anyone's like to, uh, raise their hand right now, uh, please do so. There are no questions, answers, and those hand, no hands raised. So with that, I'll turn the floor back over.
And we do have somebody here. Can, can you come up? I'm sorry. We, uh, realize that we have to get you guys to speak into the mic there because it makes it a little difficult for us to do our notes. Tell them.
Casey Goodbar, my, my property is adjacent to the campground. But I just wanted to say that I agree with all those comments. I think it'd be a wonderful thing. And even the music, you know.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind that either.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodbar.
Do we have any other comments from anybody that's present? You didn't see anybody on the computer or phone?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, with that, uh, with no further comments, the public hearing is closed and we'll bring it back to the board. Any additional questions, comments? Get everything answered? Like we dealt with all of it?
Right.
Where do we land for the number of shows, events?
We ended at, uh, thirty-six. We think just three a month, you know, at the most.
Make them back in a couple more.
And we did thirty-four for the, because that's two per building for the studios. Okay? All right. Then we'll call for the question.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that recommend to the board supervisors that the special exemption permit to develop and operate a cultural arts center in agricultural transitional A T zone district per L D R section six oh eight B point oh three dash thirteen on the property identified as tax map number one thirteen dash A dash seven be approved with the following conditions. Uh, substantial compliance with the development plan, uh, titled Thunder Bridge cottages, barracks, and classroom buildings dated, uh, February ninth, uh, twenty twenty-two. Cultural art, uh, center limits to thirty-four number of arts and craft studios. Cultural art, a center is limited to thirty-six, um, events, art shows, and craft shows per calendar year. Adequate off-street parking facilities and traffic control will be provided. No parking along the Arnold's Valley Road, um, routes seven fifty-nine. All trash shall be taken directly to the landfill and not to the county collection centers or counted green boxes. Lighting shall be compliant with, uh, thirteen oh one, uh, thirteen oh one point oh oh of the Rockbridge County, uh, Land Development Regulation approval contingents with the, uh, V dot Health Department, Building Department approvals, and the, uh, owners and tenants shall not engage any large-scale production.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Thank you. Thank you, Panda Bakers. Appreciate that. Um, so we are moving on to agenda item number six, Saint Dunston's Academy, fifty-four Allen Creek Lane, Goshen, Virginia. Uh, we have a public hearing scheduled, application for a special exception permit for a private school in the agricultural and general uses A two zoning district.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Thomas Fickley here, uh, with Saint Dunston's Academy is, is here to represent the project. Uh, prior to turning the floor over to, uh, Mr. Fickley, I do have a, another, uh, brief PowerPoint presentation. Uh, bear with me here. Oh, right. Sorry about that. Uh, this is a special exception, uh, made by Saint Dunston's Academy. Uh, that is a Virginia corporation, uh, and, and currently, I believe it's applying for a five oh one three status, but I'll give you, let you have an opportunity to update the planning commission on that. Uh, this is a special exception, uh, for a private school in the agricultural and general use districts. That's the A two zoning district. A little bit, uh, the property details itself, the properties are under consideration, are owned by Daily W. and Donna J. Johnson. They are identified as tax map number nine dash one dash four and nine dash one dash one B. The, 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 and the property, a second property that's under consideration is owned by one application, two different properties, is owned by Stuart B. Jones. That's consisting of tax map number nine dash A dash one, nine dash one dash two C two, nine dash one dash one B one, and nine dash one dash two B two. The Johnson tracks combined, both parcels are, is a total of seventy-one point nine one acres per tax records, and the Jones tracks, that's a total of four tracks, consist of a total of one hundred ninety-three point nine three acres per tax records. The property are located in the agricultural and limited use district A one and the agricultural and general use district A two. All proposed facilities are located in A two zoning district. Uh, as far as the special exception itself, uh, special, uh, per section six oh three point oh three dash twenty of the county of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations, private schools are used by special exception in the A two zoning district. Per the enclosed plan shown on the screen, the application proposes a board, a boys boarding school that includes five bunkhouses for the students and ten dwellings, uh, for the faculty and staff. In addition to the housing for the students and faculty, the proposed plan calls for a great hall, a chapel, library, main office, and a wood shop. The proposed boys private school is for forty-eight to sixty boarding school students, uh, which is only boarding school students, no, uh, no day students as referred to. The proposal does not include any, uh, day students at the school. As far as, um, as far as the draft conditions, uh, most of these, uh, I was able to, uh, review with Mr. Fickley. There are some, there will be some, some new ones incorporated because again, just like the other project, we're working up to the wire on these. Uh, so, uh, number one, the private school, these are proposed conditions that could be utilized, that could be considered by the planning commission. Number one, the private school to be developed in substantial compliance with the master plan for Saint Dunston's Academy dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Frye Art Associates Architecture. That's of course, the, the plan that's in your package and displayed on the screen previously. Access to the private school will be along Allen Creek Road, private road on tax map number nine dash one dash one B and nine dash one dash four. That is the Jones parcels, uh, currently the Jones parcels, and it goes on show, as shown on the reference plan. The fire lane shown on the reference plan will be limited, uh, limited in use for emergency purposes only. Number two, all new structures to be located outside of the hundred-year floodplain. Number three, the total number of students not to exceed sixty. That's of course, on the high end of the, of the written request of forty-eight to sixty. Number four, the school will be limited to boarding school only, no day students, and be limited to ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. So this is proposed as a high school, uh, with, with high school age children. Number five, the plan to be implemented within two years of date of approval. Uh, number six, all trash to be taken directly to the landfill and not county collection centers or green boxes. Number seven, lighting shall be in compliance with thirteen oh three of the county of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. And number eight, uh, approval contingent on, uh, Virginia Department Transportation, B dot Health Department, Building Department, and Department of Education approvals, and the Rockbridge County Office of Fire, uh, Rescue and Emergency Management. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to, uh, Thomas, Mr. Thomas Fickley with the Saint Dunston's Academy. Uh, and prior to, uh, well, I'll stop sharing now. And if needed, uh, y'all do have large sets. You have eleven by seventeen copies of the plan with some enlargements associated with that. Uh, with that, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Fick.
Thank you, Mr. Slayden, and thank you, members of the planning commission for being here and for considering our application for a special exception permit to build our school on agricultural land. Um, as Mr. Slayden said, we're, we are hoping to build a private school for young boys, uh, age fourteen to eighteen years old. These would be high school age boys, boarding school that we're hoping to start, and its main purpose is to be a Christian agricultural school. Like to say a little bit more about that in just one moment. Um, there's one additional building that Mr. Slayden did not mention. There's also a forge, a small forge that the boys to learn traditional blacksmithing. That's the one building on there. I don't, I don't know if you had that on your list, but.
I don't believe I did. I appreciate it.
Yeah, sure thing. Just wanted to make sure we had the count right. Um, the, the school that we're hoping to build is going to allow young men to go back in time and learn traditional crafts and traditional skills that we believe a lot of young men in our society are losing. Um, we think that many schools now do not teach young men how to live the most joyful life that they can. Many don't know how to pray, how to work with their own hands, how to grow their own food, how to sing good songs, how to treat other people with respect, how to look someone in the eye and shake their hand, how to open the door for somebody else. Um, we think that both their manners and their skills, uh, could, could be better, and we would like to help to change that. The small cohort of boys that we're talking about, forty-eight to sixty, would spend their time getting a classical education in these small school buildings we're hoping to build, while also operating a farm that produces most of their food, most of the food that they are going to consume. Uh, we see our school's mission as raising up good men who know the value of good hard work and also value the land that they live on. Um, a major part of our school's mission is agricultural. America, over the last two decades, and really for longer than that, has been going through a farming crisis. We have set up all sorts of regulations to protect our farmland, and those are good, but we have not done the other thing that we need to. We've not trained up the next generation to take over those farms and steward them well. We need boys who know how to preserve and improve the land for the next generation, who want to raise up families to do the same. And those abilities stem from a belief that land is important and that life is sacred, and we have a responsibility to protect it and to preserve its best qualities. As the boys care for the forests and move the chickens around and milk the cows and learn how to grow vegetables, they will learn also the character traits needed to persevere in a world that is becoming increasingly full of fragility and anxiety. And we hope to inspire the boys to live more joyfully in doing so. Uh, you all have our application that has some more, some more details about what we were trying to do, but I'd like to, to save the time now for your questions, um, and see if there are things that I can answer for you all.
Anybody have questions, Ian?
Chris, a question for you, and it's going to determine how I proceed. The notification process that we did, we've received some feedback from some of the people involved that they may not have been properly notified.
I can address that. So, so threefold is, in order to hold a public hearing, we have to do three things. Uh, the first thing is add a newspaper for two consecutive weeks prior to this meeting. That was done, that was on, that was, that was done correctly, obviously. The, the second thing we have to do is post the property ten days prior to this meeting. Uh, that was done. The third item that, that is required to be done is send certified mail to all direct adjoiners back up certified mail if it's less than twenty-five adjoiners, uh, first class, thank you, uh, first class mail if it's over twenty-five adjoiners. In this particular case, uh, I think it was twenty-two adjoiners, if I recall correctly, it was under that twenty-five threshold. So we were required to send certified mail. So this off, Office Community Development sent certified mail to all the direct adjoiners. Uh, we also sent Augusta County, uh, because they're within a half-mile radius, I think, of one of the edges of the property. So we sent Augusta County, uh, certified mail, and we sent the applicant, of course, the certified mail as well. So those were mailed on, on the twenty-eighth of January, uh, and I do understand, because I've received the same feedback, that, that some did not, did not get it and did not get, have not gotten it potentially, or did not get it until, you know, Friday, the, the fourth or so. That was one date that I recall. Um, so, so as far as the, I don't believe there's a timeframe in state law of that adjoining notification. The, unlike the publication in the newspaper, there, there are certain criteria from five days to twenty-one days before the public hearing type thing. So that was, that was set, but, but we do our best, especially with, with the pandemic we're in. It is, obviously, as y'all know, it slowed down mail. And so we do our best to send them out earlier and earlier. I can confirm that all the joiners got it. Per tax records, all the joiners mail went out on the twenty-eighth.
But do you have, you got something saying they actually got it, or you did not get that back? You just know you mailed it on the twenty-eighth?
We mailed it on the twenty-eighth, and so we no longer do, we're required to do certified mail. We do not do return receipts anymore. It's three dollars and forty cent, I think, per, per return receipts, but we do have the ability to, to check the status of them on, online, of course, now, unlike what we did.
And you've checked them and.
I haven't checked all of them. The ones that, that were brought to, to our attention, uh, they, they buried. I mean, some were delivered, some were pending, and I did not check any today that most of these that I got word of that were, were slower than others. I checked yesterday.
Okay. Great. I mean, potentially, there's still some people that are adjoiners that have not gotten that notification.
I'm uncertain on that. Yes.
Okay.
So, so I would, I would recommend to answer Timmy's question directly. That was a direct question, direct answer. Uh, I think we are in good shape to, to, we, we, we certainly can hold the public hearing now. Uh, and, and I would, I would, I would, we will hold the public hearing. The two options moving forward after that public hearing is, is we can close the public hearing, or we can continue the public hearing. If we continue the public hearing until next month, the next regularly scheduled, staff will re-advertise both in the newspaper, ensure that the sign is still erect, and then also resend certified mail. Uh, that's if we can continue the public hearing. And so with that being said, if we close the public hearing, the public hearing is just that, it's closed. But historically speaking, we have allowed public comment at the next meeting, even though it's not a bona fide public hearing. My suggestion would be, uh, to, to my suggestion, uh, as staff would be to really continue the public hearing, I think would be the, the, the more appropriate case. It's, it's, you know, a little bit more expense, more work, but, but just to ensure that, you know.
I want to make sure.
That worked out. And, and all that, I will say just briefly, all of that, the, the mailings, the posts posted in the property and the newspaper ad is, is a, is, in my opinion, is an invitation for the community, for the, for the citizens of the area and elsewhere to get involved. And so that is a critical point.
Right.
Yeah, that, that is a critical point.
Cut that off. Right, for sure. Um, I, I did look at the website, you know, your website. So you have a school currently in Charlottesville?
Oh, no, we do not have a school currently. We have incorporated with the state of Virginia, but we do not, we don't have any property. I teach at another school in Charlottesville.
So that's the school that I, the link that was on your email that you sent to us was that school where you teach?
The link that was on my email was for the Saint Dunston's Academy website, and we have renderings on there of what our future campus might look like.
So that is, so what I looked at was what you're proposing, but you do not currently have a school?
We do not. No. So the property that we have under contract is where we were, we are applying for the special exception permit.
I was saying it was a second location. And will it be accredited? What's your plan there?
We do not plan to be accredited for various reasons. There are two different schools that we're basing our model off of, and there isn't a reason that we need to be accredited from what I've, from my consultations with those schools.
Okay.
It's not a requirement.
And as far as the teachers, people that you will have there working, will they be accredited? Will they be licensed teachers? What's the?
No, in independent schools, licensure is not required. So the, the two schools that I've taught at, for example, I've taught in independent schools for ten years. I've not needed licensure for either of those. So the teachers. So the teachers will be people who have the appropriate degrees and the appropriate experience to deliver the kind of education that we're talking about.
Okay. Other questions? All right, I don't.
Well, yeah, I do, just about the the land itself. I had the luxury of getting out there and seeing it. Can you kind of describe, see the aerial photo? Looks like a mixture of open and forest and where the facilities fit in with that and the grade? And and then how you're proposing to supply water and wastewater?
Right, so we're hoping to drill wells and for wastewater, we have not finished designing our system yet. That process is pretty expensive to work with professional engineers, and we didn't want to go ahead and put out that very large expense before we know how the county is going to respond. I I hope you understand. But we are looking into several different options. We have a private soil consultant lined up to come out to the property with us pending what happens at this hearing and do a soils analysis. We are hoping to have it done before now, but because the ground has been either frozen or so soft and waterlogged for the last couple of weeks, we haven't been able to get a good soils analysis. So that's that's wastewater. For wells, we still need to drill wells. Again, we're trying to wait to make that expense until we know that there's a good chance that we can do this. As far as the location of the campus, if if you've been out there before and gone back on the the main gravel drive that goes down to the river, there are logging roads on the east side of the property that are sort of honeycombed back in there where the logging company that that selectively timbered the place about seventeen years ago built a turnaround or a landing pad and graded out some of the ground. And there's a very gradual slope up there in the woods that has mostly very young saplings and then a few large trees. And we hope to clear out those saplings and on the very gradual grade build this campus. And you have the dimensions of those buildings there on the plan. Do, does that answer your questions?
Yeah.
So the gravel road that's there currently, that is a shared drive?
It is so our plan, should our special exception permit be granted, would be to take Allen Creek Road, which currently is a private road, and extend that up the ridge and put in a few switchbacks and then connect it to the gravel road that goes down to the river. Currently, that road, the entrance for that road is shared access for three different property owners. If we if we build this new driveway, that will bypass one of those owners' properties so that we won't have to go over somebody else's land. And that would leave one other property owner that we would have a shared, a shared driveway.
And as far as EMS, I mean, I guess you talked to them. We saw that we were, I think Rob brought up that there is a, you know, we're talking about the fire truck, you know, or do we have any concerns about fire trucks being able to get back in there over these bridges? You know, they're pretty heavy and, you know, on the way out there.
Yeah, so I I met with Fire Chief Nathan Ramsey on two different occasions and went out to the site to check out how the driveway is right now and what improvements and modifications would need to be made. And there are several creek crossings that would need enhanced culverts, that basically stronger culverts for the fire trucks. They've suggested that we put in a dry hydrant down at the river in case the trucks need to fill up while they're out there making a visit. And then there are a few dips and inclivities that need to be smoothed out. But according to Chief Ramsey's letters, all of that work is feasible if we have the funds and they're willing to go through it.
You're looking at a three thousand gallon tanker and a truck, you're going to be looking at fifty thousand pounds. So you got to make sure you're picking fifty five thousand or whatever you put in total bridge wise.
That's it.
Brought up something, switchbacks, how tight of a switchback, because I know how it is with fire trucks. We've got this thing in time in the S E M S equipment that they've got. They don't do well on something in the way of too tight of a switchback.
Right. The switchbacks were Chief Ramsey's suggestion. We have, there's a dirt road already there that goes up the ridgeline and connects to the gravel drive, but it's a little too steep for his liking. So he suggested that we put in two switchbacks with a little pull off area at each one of them to handle the fire trucks turning radius. And he said that would, given the space that we have on our property, he said, there's enough room to do that. And I think both of the letters that he signed and submitted should be in our application.
With with ten dwellings for staff, that's going to be a county spec road anyway, right?
It it the the state standard road, so one road that's or it depends on the subdivision. So that we're not, to my knowledge, we're not proposing any subdivision on this particular case. So any one road that serves per the subdivision ordinance, not the zoning ordinance, per the subdivision ordinance, any one road that serves three to ten parcels of land is required to be state, is required to be state standard. Obviously, there's there's, you know, on this particular project, the under consideration, I think there's already a total of six or seven parcels, six parcels, I believe. And so 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 just building on the, the requirement comes under the subdivision review, not the the construction of the dwellings. Now, that's different than B dot, to to be clear, the the V dot requires the entrance to be met on the number of dwellings, and that's the conversation that Thomas has had, Mr. Fickley's had with, I think it was John Coffey with with John Cameron, excuse me, with with V dot. And and the current entrance does not meet site distance, but they indicated via email that the the a proposed entrance, I think, may. I don't think we have affirmative answer from Mr. Cameron, but that it may meet the site distance.
So you're going to have houses and bunk houses on here, or not much back bunk houses, but the facility faculty building, so that's not considered a subdivision is what you're you're saying. So the bridges and things like that can just be culvert bridges?
We could handle in conditions, absolutely. But but as far as the, as far as the subdivision ordinance, we we could not apply the subdivision ordinance to a special exception because we're not talking about a subdivision.
This is all one parcel.
Because it's, it's actually already multiple parcels. Those those multiple, the the subdivision regulations pertaining to the road standards went into effect in mid two thousand and five, I believe. And and so these parcels long predate those regulations of of requiring that state standard right for a subdivision.
So two other, I have two other questions. One is has to do with like the number of events where families would be coming in. You know, if you have ninety kids or was it sixty, sorry, sixty kids in there, you know, are you going to have, you know, an opening day, a closing day, a homecoming, you know? I'm just trying to figure out that's, I I went out there today. Those are some pretty tight roads there.
That's a good question. We plan to have families on campus for pickup and drop off times. So at the beginning of each period of the school year, so once in the fall, once around Christmas time, once around January, and then once in May, those are the main times that families would need to be there to drop off and pick up their kids.
Okay. And trying to think what, I had another question just left. Oh, I guess the question was, how did you guys come up with that? I mean, is there some study? I mean, is there a need for this? Obviously, you know, you all are passionate about this and see a need for it. Is there?
Yes.
I guess a study or something?
That stemmed out of of years of reading and conversations and and working in schools and seeing seeing a need with the students that we work with, but also reading a lot of the literature on what's happening to adolescent young men particularly. So anecdotally, I was having a conversation with the head of school at another private school who told me in confidence, and I I won't reveal who the, you know, which school this was, but they have something like thirty seniors at their school, and twenty eight out of thirty are diagnosed with anxiety right now. So there there is a need for a different kind of schooling than what is widely available. And that's just, that's just anecdotal. But there Leonard Sacks is a psychologist who studied this in detail. He wrote a couple of books. One of them is called Boys Adrift. It's about what's happening to adolescent boys right now and the sort of psychological problems that a lot of them are dealing with. So I'd recommend his work if you're interested in seeing that, but that's, that's one of the studies we've looked at. Anthony Eslen has written some books that we read, Jason Craig. So there's been research done on this and and some suggestions about what to do. There are also two other schools that already operate in a very similar way. Gregory the Great Academy up in Pennsylvania, right outside Scranton, and St. Martin's Academy in Fort Scott, Kansas. And I had the opportunity to visit both of those schools and talk to them about their programs and how they came up with the ideas and how they've made them sustainable and how they work. Both schools have pretty significant farms that provide somewhere around eighty percent of the proteins and fats for the boys who work on the farms and go to the school there. So they're they're helping to teach restorative agriculture to the next generation, and that's a very central part of what their program is. But they're the kind of people we're consulting with right now.
Okay, thank you. Anything else up here? Are we ready to open the public hearing? Okay. So we are going to, at this time, yeah, thank you. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak on this issue?
We could just recognize.
Yep, just a reminder, when you come up, you know, to state your name, Magisterial District, and please speak into the microphone so we have this on tape.
We'll go down lists.
Oh, and three minutes, and somebody's going to keep track over here.
We got it here, yes, ma'am. Trey Bailey?
My name is Trey Bailey, and I'm a Rockbridge County resident. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission and ladies and gentlemen of the public. I am a local teacher at a boys' school, a middle school for boys. And although I'm not here to speak in my official capacity as a representative of representative of that school, I would like to speak as an educator and as now a friend of Mr. Fickley and his supporters. When I first learned about this project and read through the website, as many of you did, the first thing I did after just being impressed myself was I showed it to my wife, who has worked in schools for for twelve years now. And she said, honey, if you were to start a school, this is exactly what you would want to do. And some of the gentlemen here will probably understand when I say that my wife is rarely wrong. So she obviously sees the vision there. I have two sons. The kind of school that Mr. Fickley is proposing is precisely what I would envision for my own children and for my students. I formerly taught high school down in Abingdon, Virginia, and I might add that my father works in local government down there. And so I I understand the sacrifice that you guys make. He comes home from many late meetings such as this. So thank you for thinking about this, thinking about the way in this, the way this project might benefit the community here. It's something that I would encourage the families of my students to consider when they reach a high school age. And I also have a podcast where I talk to educators all over the country and even across the world. I've talked headmasters in France and Kenya and all over the states. And so I know that Mr. Fickley is is reading the right things. He's consulting with the right people, and he is addressing a need that is being felt across the country and around the world. And so is there a big challenge here? Absolutely, but we need dreamers, we need visionaries, and we need people like Mr. Fickley who know how to get his hands in the dirt and actually make these things happen in a way that would not only enrich, literally enrich the soil of our local area, but also enrich the the lives of the young men and the families. And so I'll just end by saying that I would like my sons to go to a school like this. If any of you have young sons, I would encourage you to consider this type of education. If any of you have daughters who are looking for future husbands, what better place to mold young men who would serve their community, serve their families, potentially sit on boards such as this, work in local government, local business, and do so with integrity and honor and nobility? I appreciate your time and and I fully support this program.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Next up is Eric Parker, I believe it is. Good to state your name in Magisterial District.
Yes, my name is Eric Parker, and I'm not sure what my district is. I'm right outside of Lexington, so, okay, I suppose that answers the question.
What road are y'all?
Sixty one, well, my old Buena Vista Road.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep. I'm the Reverend Dr. Eric Parker. I'm the rector of St. Paul's Anglican Church here in Lexington. Thank you all for your time and for considering Mr. Fickley's application. I would strongly encourage you to approve it. I am incredibly impressed by everything that he has proposed for this school, and I've worked in education myself for a number of years. And I think that this will be of strong spiritual benefit to our community as well as educational. And I I'll I'll keep my comments brief and just say that this is something that I I think that it would be an answer to prayer, honestly, for many of the families in our area. And I would strongly encourage you to to approve it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Next up is John Murphy.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is John Murphy. I'm in the Cars Creek District. I've been a resident of the county for the past ten years. And I also very much support the idea of the St. Dunson's Academy. I think it's a very unique and exceptional vision for for a school. And I think Rockbridge County should be blessed to have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Lisa Milo?
Thank you, guys. I'm Lisa Milo, and I'm from the Walkers Creek District. And we are, our property would have the shared road as well as their buildings beside our property. We bought this property years ago. My family is a very, very much a farming family, very much into preserving land and agriculture. And that's the one reason that my husband and I wanted to buy it. And we ended up purchasing it, and our kids have enjoyed it. It's now four generations that we are enjoying picnics, hiking, taking care of the land. And I, I, although I believe in preserving land and agricultural, I do not see how twenty one buildings and sixty students plus faculty will preserve any of that pristine, beautiful land that is out there that we so use that it and and use it privately and have enjoyed it for many years. So I strongly suggest that you guys deny this application. I really feel strongly that it will change our community. It will change the road that we have to share with them as well as it's very difficult to get in and out there as it is, and I can't imagine that many people out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Milo.
Next signed up is a Winston Campbell.
Winston Campbell, Walker Creek District. I'm not really ready. I got my notice Monday. A lot of people still hadn't got their notices that I talked to yesterday. But I have talked to every person, landowner around this, except for Larners. I couldn't get hold of Miss Larner, and none of them, none of them is in favor of it. And several of them is strongly not approved enough, including myself. He wants this school backed up in the mountain as far as he can get it, so he backed it up against me. I got two hundred acres, but sixty six of it was been in my family since the eighteen hundreds. And and that's the piece that's against them. And the places that he has picked to build houses, you can throw rock across my fence. But it's, we're just not interested in it at all. I'm glad, I like to have these boys taught somewhere, but they do not have to take them out in the middle of the mountain to try to teach themselves. They could have found land anywhere, cheaper, better land for farming and built this thing out in the open. But no, they want to stick it back up in the mountain. They've got a hundred and thirteen acres of the one lot that's totally useless to them. It's a straight up cliff, and it's on the other side of the river that they can't even access unless you go swim. If you go today, you couldn't toss it for nothing. And Eddie Parker, which you didn't hear tonight, but I think he sent Eddie Parker his pieces against them too on one side. It's been in his family since the seventeen hundreds. And he's got a nice camp down there right against on the river, shooting range. School, no shooting within a thousand feet of the property lot. So we'll have to, for him, he'll have to quit shooting. And we, not even really, you can't hunt. I think the rule says you can't hunt within that thousand feet, but it has to be on private land. And you can't just go out and start shooting at the target or lining your gun up. And once y'all give him this right for a religious and a school, because he has, don't pay no taxes anymore. Y'all will lose tax benefit for a pretty good hunk of land. And I reckon you raised mine, so we'll have to make a difference. And he is going to build a a city there with eighty people, eighty to a hundred people there all the time, living there. And I know they don't keep, I don't care where the boys come from, but it's going to be hard to keep sixty kids inside their fence. Short notice. And I talked to all the owners, and it is a flood zone. Short notice. And I talked to all the owners. If it is a flood zone, I don't care what they say. I have personally took care of that land up to the last 10 years with Jones boy. I run cows down there. I was a caretaker of it from the 60s up to now. And I run cows down there. And I've had to move the cows out so they didn't flood away. I've seen six foot deep on a third of the 80 acres that he's talking about. He could build everything on one plot. He talks about having divided up into four, which it was. Piece across the mountain, I mean, across the river. This piece is about 80 acres. And then it's a strip across the top. It's about 10 acres. But he wants to build them all on that one plot. And he, the slate grazing was talking about, you couldn't drive a truck up there. You can take it around this way, something, but.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Your three minutes is up here, but we will.
I'm both done.
All right. Well, we're, we'll probably going to.
Appreciate y'all really looking at this thing. Because it's going to be a headache and nobody else will want it.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Ms. Campbell, is it? Okay, all right. Next up is Steve Milo.
I'm Steve Milo, Lisa's husband, Walkers Creek. I'm the one that wrote that letter Commissioner Alton about the concern about notice. I heard this evening and I was glad to hear that you're concerned about neighbors input. Is it going to change the way of life? Absolutely. There's a lot of people that you should hear from. You really should. And that's why I wrote that letter. Office has been great. That was not meant to suggest it wasn't done right. I'm sure it was. Just as a practical matter, what you're talking about here is changing the way of life. The comments about a subdivision, I put in my letter 10 houses. It's 20. It's 20 structures that they're going to build. As Mr. Campbell just said, it's on a very compact area. There's a flood plain. You're going to put all this campus right in a very small footprint. We bought out there, my wife and I, because we loved it out there. We knew we were moving out to the rural part of the county. We knew we were not going to get public services like everybody else. We traded that off because we got the beauty. The beauty's gone. If you were out there, man, you saw how gorgeous that was. And Commissioner Lucas on the switchback, the shared road that we're talking about, we bought that property at auction. It rained the night before. We had to walk down that road because I couldn't take my four wheel pickup down there. That's not a lie. That's what happened. There is no way a fire truck's getting down there. And that's a shared road. That is a shared road. When Mr. Jones owned it, I think I used 10, 20, 30 times a year. You're talking about 80 permanent residents out there. I think if you look at the map, and I haven't had a chance to digest it, and I truly appreciate if you would continue this so we could put our thoughts more together for you. But if you look at that road, that's going to be Main Street. That's how they're getting in and out of it. The property he bought gets you to the top of the hill. Getting down to where it's, the campus is going to be, that's down that road. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that road, but literally, that's the one I had to walk down to bed on this property. So that's going to change a lot. I just don't understand how they would do it. Looking at the comprehensive plan, it's meant to preserve that, that beauty. I am not coming, I respect the desire to raise good men and women for that matter. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about taking a pristine piece of property that, that area was meant to preserve and ripping it up. I mean, the construction for 20 properties? That, that is, I can't even imagine how long that's going to take, how long the ground will be tore up while it happens. Hope they can get through the project because once they start, as you mentioned, it goes with the land. They could have them through that project and it doesn't work. They hit something. It's gone. That pristine is gone forever. There's no way we would have purchased that property next to the school because that was the whole point, to be out there, to be where nobody was. And again, the trade off was, we're not looking for those services. I have a 16 year old boy. He can't keep an eight by eight bedroom team. 60 kids out there, they could be the best men in the world. There's going to be trash. There's going to be noise. There's nothing out there right now. There's going to be 80 permanent residents. There's going to be trash. The river, no cell phones, no computers. That river is going to be a major recreational event for these kids. And as much as I appreciate that, you're going to put 60 boys in the river down there. That thing is really tight. The sensitivity, economic sensitivity, oh my gosh. We haven't heard how they trying to get electric out there, sanitation and all that. I just can't imagine wanting to put that project out there. But I would ask you really, I'm sorry, I do appreciate your time. I would love the opportunity to talk to my neighbors, the folks in support here aren't neighbors. I respect them. I almost agree with a lot of what they said about growing good Christian men. I like that. I like good Christian women too. I just don't know what this is a place for. This just changes what they're going to do out there. I'd love the opportunity to collect my neighbor's thoughts and present it to you and continue hearing. I'll just go on.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Milo.
Thank you, sir. And this isn't, this did not buzz that second time. So I may just raise my hand if we.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say scared me the first time.
Appreciate everyone's comments. That is all that signed up to speak, but we will certainly recognize anyone else that wishes to speak at this time.
Okay. We do have one more, Chris.
State your name and magistrate district for the record.
My name is Christopher Simpson. I'm a resident of Stanton City. I would be a resident of this facility that is approved. I'm a Rockbridge County firefighter. My opinions do not portray the view of Rockbridge County Fire. Just want to put that out there. I believe that this would be a benefit for the entire county. I'm stationed in Glasgow, one of the lower income areas in the county. We're bringing 80 people to help impact the economy and improve the, the local community. You know, average age of farmers are 65 or over. You're going to have 60 young boys that are in the area to help these farmers if they want the help. If they don't want the help, so be it. We're here to enrich the land. We've spoken with restoration agriculture specialists. We've had them walk this property with us. And we have a plan in place to improve the property. If you've been out there, you've seen it. There's cedars, there's broom sedge. We plan to change that and make it look beautiful and functional and improve this land. I have nothing further. In regards to the fire engines and that, there are three ponds right now on the 80 acres. The proposed road would bypass Mr. Campbell's land and would meet at the top of the ridge with the other property. That is my knowledge of the event, of the location of that road. I apologize. Other than that, that's all I have. Just wanted to address those couple things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Again, we recognize anyone else that'd like to speak at this time. Not seeing any. I will go to the computer. If you would like to speak and you are online via Zoom, if you could use your raised hand button now would be the appropriate time. I do have one or two emails this time to read out of my, excuse me, we do have, we do have one already raised hand. Mr. Andrew Johnson, you are muted, but you have the floor. If you could state your name and magistrate district for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. My name is Andrew Johnson. I'm the oldest son of Daley and Donna Johnson, the property owners. I currently live outside of Charlotte, North Carolina, where not far from where Daley and Donna are at a assisted living facility at this moment. Just very quickly, we appreciate you all's time in listening to the comments and taking into consideration that. We also appreciate our neighbors and their concerns. And speaking on behalf of one of the landowners, we just asked that, like I said, to keep an open mind. It is a beautiful piece of property. We were there for four generations. And one of the things when we were approached by the school that we most enjoyed about it was the fact that it would continue a legacy. We grew up there and had a great time with it. And as everybody else says, such a beautiful property, there can be some compromises made. So we just asked it, like I said, the board and you all keep an open mind and work with the school and work with the neighbors so that compromise, if need be, can be made and that school can be built at least in some form or function. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So we don't have anybody else on the phone or Zoom?
No one else with their hand raised and no open questions. With that, I can, I can read the written comments we've received and then check back with the computer.
Thank you.
And some of these, I think all of these will be somewhat less than three minutes. But if you want to go ahead and time, that'd be fine. The first is from Stuart Jones. Stuart Jones, it says, hi. This comment is for my support of approving the special exception for Saint Dunston's Academy at the 09 February 22 Planning Commission meeting and the Board of Supervisors meeting on 28th February 2022. My name is Stuart Jones and I own one of the properties that is for this proposed use. I've owned the property since 2007 and I've had it under Stuart's program, stewardship program since 2009. And it even, and was even named stewardship Person of the Year following the Virginia Department of Transportation's Forestry Approved Plan. I'm excited not only that Saint Dunston's will continue the stewardship, but also teach young men and, young men these values. I'm a member of the Chesterfield County Farm Bureau and, and I am also excited for Virginia to have a school that will teach agricultural at this age. I have a lot of family. I have a, I have a lot in my family who are or have been teachers, parentheses, wife, father, uncles, nieces, et cetera, and appreciate the value and power of education. So this proposed use for the property is ideal and aligns with, with all I believe in. I hope you approve the request. And should anyone have any questions about my tracks of land, I will be glad to assist them in any way I can. Again, respectfully, Stuart Jones. The next one is from Crystal Kaufman. It says, to the planning commission, board supervisors, I'm writing, express my concerns approving the special exception for the private boys' school, private boards boarding school, Saint Dunston's Academy. A portion of land is currently an agricultural zone property with frequently floods, adding five bunkhouses, 10 dwellings and a facility. And other campus halls will have a huge environmental impact, huge environmental impact. I'm concerned about the potential disruption and pollution that will sure, sure to follow with what type of sector system will be in place. What about water supply? What impact will the private school of 46 to 60 boys have on the Little Calf, Little River, Calf Passer Stream, and on the Maury River? Increase of traffic pollution caused, the increase in traffic pollution caused by supply runs for the school will cause greater noise and air pollution to the surrounding community of Bell's Valley. What will the private school to ensure that the wildlife already, I'm sorry, what, what will the private do, school do to ensure that the wildlife already established is not displaced? What are the ages of the boys who attend the boarding school? Will the boarding school be for United States citizens or will, will be for foster children or refugees? Does Saint Dunston's Academy currently have an established, successful model they are following? Will security be provided? Will Second Amendment rights be violated with the addition of private school and farmland? Is there a plan for compensation for neighboring farmers who will be sharing the road rights of way? Will the burden and expense of increased pollution and traffic be passed on the neighboring landowners? We have too many unknowns to approve the special exception for rezoning. As a landowner and a voter, I'm recommending deny, I recommend denying this special exception until more information is provided adjoining property owners and farmers already in the Bell's Valley area. Next one is from John Kaufman III. It says, as a concerned landowner, as a concerned landowner of the Kaufman Farm, I have questions concerning the proposed private school on agriculturally zoned property. Does Saint Dunston's have another school location at, and this is expansion of a successful program? What type of septic system or drain field will be considered environmental friendly on the property located in a flood zone? How will pollution runoff be kept from Little Calf Passer Stream, which contributes to the Maury River? How will the increase in traffic in and out of the property maintained, be maintained? What will be, what will the expense of the ingress and egress to the, onto the adjoining property owners right away be? The current roadways require significant upgrade accessible, to be accessible by a tractor. How will 10 families and a, and a school facilities for 40 to 60 students not increase traffic concerns? What about the life, wildlife that will be displaced? Bald, the bald eagle nesting areas, question mark. Will the security that guarantees, will there be security that guarantees safety of the students at the school and the surrounding residents? I'm concerned with the viral mill impacts, implications of land value that the private school, we know very little about, will have on my, will have on my neighbors, my family farm, the way of life that we have enjoyed for the last 50 years. I am not in favor of the rezoning property adjoining mine and my neighbors for the private, for the special private school. We need more details before approving or agreeing to a special zoning change. Sincerely, John Kaufman III Kaufman Farm. The next one is from Mr. Edward Parker. It says, I, this is in reference to the Saint Dunston Academy private school application. I am a landowner whose property borders the property, the property that Saint Dunston's Academy is planning to purchase if their permit is approved. I am, I, such as I am in total disapproval of their purchase of this property for their school and would greatly appreciate that the committee denying the permit for such purpose. Below are the reasons I do not want Saint Dunston's to receive a permit to purchase this property from Stuart Jones, the current owner of the property. Number one, my property, which has been in my mother's family since 1747, will drop in value. Number two, will affect my hunting rights on my property as well as my ability to target practice due to the required distance you have to be from any type of school with a loaded firearm. Number three, will negatively, will negatively affect the peace and quiet of my neighbors and I currently experience. Number four, this is farmland and should be used as such, not a school. Number five, part of the property is in the flood plain. According to like what I understand, the Saint Dunston's Academy is a non-for-profit, not-for-profit and seems to me, Rockbridge County will lose income for this property if academy permit is approved as a NPO, not-for-profit, and doesn't have to pay property taxes. Another reason to die the permit. That's all I have. Thank you. Sincerely, Edward M. Parker. We also have received written comments from Mr. Milo and I'll, of course, I sent all of these to y'all. The, these were, the started receiving these on Monday. Well, the first one was received on Monday, the 7th, and then all the other ones were received yesterday. And I believe I received Mr. Milo's letter today. I will, y'all have all the letters at hand. And since Mr. Milo already spoke, I won't read the letter that y'all have him on via email this afternoon. That's all I have that's signed up.
Okay.
I'm sorry, written.
You're going to double check. We still have nobody on Zoom or phone?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So we do not have any hands raised at this time. That's correct.
Okay. So it appears everyone would, who would like to make a comment, has made a comment.
Yes. And so prior to closing the public hearing, we have to have that. It's just normal for the chairperson to close the public hearing afterward, but based on.
We're going to have a conversation about that right now. Yes. So everyone's made public comment. We're going to pull it back to the board now. I think that in light of the fact that I think there's a lot of unknowns here and we feel like we haven't really had an opportunity for the adjoining property owners to have time. Some haven't gotten noticed, some got noticed late. I feel like that, yeah, it sounds like we want to continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
I do wish to continue it, but I do wish to speak to these, the people that are here. So I'm your Walkers Creek representative. And I am a property rights advocate, both ways. You're a future property owner. You are the present property owners. I will consider every bit of that. It's not a problem. I came in here, I like your concept. I like the, I really like every aspect of it. I do not like the fact that the neighbors have a lot of complaints about aesthetics and all of that. As Andrew said, Andrew Johnson, that maybe we can make some compromise or come to some, some agreement with some of this. I, I support your project, but I also support the people that are there that oppose it. So we'll, we'll have to take a lot of consideration with this. I would personally like to go back out and meet with you again. I would really like to meet with all of you at the same time, to be honest with you. And I think we can make that work. I know I can make it work for myself. Vicky, do you have any of this, we'd spoken with the sheriff and things. Is that something we can visit now? Or you want to go out of this and talk about that later? Or as far as Second Amendment and distances? And I need that information.
I have the statute that refers to the 1,000 feet on public property. Within 1,000 feet of the property line of a public, private, or religious elementary, middle, or high school. within 1,000 feet of the property line of a public, private, or religious elementary, middle, or high school would constitute a class four felony, uh, unless engaged in lawful hunting. None of these are public property.
Right.
So I don't think that particular statute would apply. That doesn't mean law enforcement would necessarily agree with my opinion on that, but there are so many statutes, um, relating to firearms and possession of firearms and uh, weapons, guns, handguns, rifles. Uh, I have a collection of them somewhere. And I'll see if I can find them and, and get them too.
But I don't want to create a problem that, that we possibly could address before we get too far along, you know?
I think, I think there were a lot of good questions that have been brought up in this public hearing, which I think maybe we could kind of put together a list, and that way you all have an opportunity to address those things that have been brought up and get some answers before you meet with constituents. And, you know, that way you'd have some, some, you know, somewhere to start. But definitely.
Got a good start on that list.
Um, so do we need to have a motion to continue the public hearing then?
I, I will say move that we continue this public hearing.
Okay.
And that would be, uh, until, let me get you everyone the exact date since we're all here. Uh, that will be continued until the March 9th, uh, 2022 regularly scheduled planning commission meeting at 7:00 PM. So continue, continue this public hearing until March 9th, 2022.
We have a motion to continue the public hearing to March 9th, 2022. We have a second. All in favor? Aye. All right, that passes then. Thank you, and thank you all for your time, everyone that came out tonight. Is there anything else that we have?
I do have one other thing. So, so I've recently been contacted, uh, by the Director of Community, a Dr., Director of Planning and Development for Lexington City, uh, that would like to request a joint planning commission meeting. And so I, I am, I am expecting a fairly full agenda in March, uh, with just anticipated applications, that type of thing. Uh, but, but wanted to bounce that off of the, the chair, and then of course, the, the rest of the planning commission
Contacted me too.
To, 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 to see the interest in, in having that joint planning commission. The purpose of the joint planning commission meeting would be to, to sort of re-review a 2015, I think it was 2015, uh, Route 60 East Corridor study. Uh, and so I could certainly include that in the package for those who, who weren't on the planning commission in 2015. Uh, and, and then though, I could certainly go, depending on this conversation, I can so certainly go back to Mr. Glasser, uh, Arnie Glazer, excuse me, uh, and, 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 and hopefully we're all supportive of this joint meeting. I'm not sure. I'll talk to him on the timeframe, and I'm, I'm sure it's going to be appropriate to do in March, depending on the workload or, or, or April. Or we could explore having an earlier meeting, you know, meet at like 5:30.
That's what I was.
Potentially.
I like that. We just, we just do it a little early. That, that's best for me, you know, just to get it knocked out beforehand. So that would be my, my.
Okay. And, and if, if March is doable for, for both planning staff at, at Rockbridge County and planning staff at City of Lexington, we'll, we'll do our best to, to try to do it in, or let's say 5:30 on the 9th would be acceptable for everybody?
That works. Works for me.
We'll see.
Let's. Yeah.
I've just got to, I got to look, but I can email you tomorrow and let you know.
Okay. So, so I'll get with him, and I'll shoot y'all an email long before the meeting. How about that? I'll, I'll follow up. I'm, I'm delinquent.
Because they may come back and say, no, April works for us.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Follow up with them and then just follow up with us.
Via email, yes, I certainly can do that.
Okay, with no further business, we will adjourn. Thank you. Thank you again for coming out.
Thank you for everybody's patience.
What?
I'm making a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Yeah.
Oh, and second, sorry.